Okay, we're gonna call the meeting to order. First item is invocation Pastor Charlie Helfer and the Church of Nazarene. After that, the pledge of allegiance will be led by Gerald Roestack. Did I say that right? Close now.
Would you join me in this prayer? Our Heavenly Father, first of all, we give thanks for this beautiful place we get to call home. The beauty that you've created for us is unspeakable. We give thanks as we look about this room and see many people who have served in many ways to make this a better community. We especially give thanks and pray for protection for our first responders, as we have several here today, continue to watch over and guide them. Lord, we have some ways we need your wisdom, we need your guidance and direction, and so we seek you to be with us through this meeting. And in a moment, we'll say, "Under God," realizing that all that we do is under your watch care, may you be glorified, may you be honored in all the ways that we speak and act this night. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen. Thank you, Pastor.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Jerry. Thank you, Pastor. Okay, and then, welcome, by the way, it's good to see you all here tonight. Okay, roll call, Diane.
Mayor Scoog.
President.
Vice Mayor Nye.
Here.
Councilmember Anderson.
Here.
Councilmember Whiting.
Here.
Councilmember Mallory.
Here.
Councilmember Marshall.
Here.
Councilmember Grossman.
I'm here, too.
We have a quorum, Mayor.
Thank you, Diane. We move on to scheduled announcements and presentation, Boys and Girls Club update. Gerald?
Mayor Scoog, Vice Mayor Nye, council members, thank you for allowing me to be here tonight to give you an update regarding the Boys and Girls Clubs of Central Arizona. The Boys and Girls Club of Central Arizona has been helping the kids at Prescott Valley for over 15 years. We are an after-school and summer program, a youth development facility, not a daycare facility, that helps kids ages six to 18 years of age. In our facility, we have four key impact areas, just a little bit about the program real quick. One of those areas is academic success. We run academic success programs, like our power hour homework programs, throughout the day to help those kids complete their homework before they actually get to go home for the day. So we call on our volunteers and our staff to work with those kids. We also have a, one of our program areas is healthy lifestyles. We believe that every one of our kids should at least engage in one hour of physical activity. The great thing about the Prescott Valley location is this park right next to it, so we're always using the park. It's one of our saviors for the kids in the area. Our third key impact area is good character and citizenship. That is completed through our torch club. It's a club within the club. It's a youth-based club that really centers on community service, and we try to teach the kids to be good stewards of the community. And our fourth is to have fun. All of our programs would not exist if we didn't have the kids, and we want to make sure those kids stay in the clubs, and that's why we have a lot of fun with the kids. They're still learning, but they don't really understand that they're learning because they're having a good time, and we want to make sure they stay in our club and keep coming back. Now, I know a lot of you have probably heard in 2014, in February 2014, the Boys and Girls Clubs of America had to come in and suspend operations of the Boys and Girls Clubs of Central Arizona. This was due for several reasons, lack of funding, it just didn't, it was not healthy. There was not a good vibe going on in the clubs. So they took important steps to kind of revive the Boys and Girls Clubs of Central Arizona. The Boys and Girls Clubs of Metro Phoenix, of where I came from and worked for nine years, entered into a management contract with the Boys and Girls Clubs of Central Arizona to help them get back on their feet. So what that means is Metro Phoenix does not run our organization, they just provide some leadership and some back office things that while I can really focus on the program and the funding and to get the systems in place to get this, you know, back up and running and to be sustainable again. So a lot of our payroll, accounting, those things are handled down in Phoenix. It's a two-year agreement. They've also opened up some fundraising doors for us that we necessarily wouldn't have. And again, it's really about putting those systems in place for us to be sustainable way into the future. In that time, from February of 2014, when we did close, to May 1, in the time that we reopened, of course, new leadership came aboard, we were able to hire two other full-time staff members. The Boys and Girls Club of Central Arizona is really only running on one full-time staff member, and that's a hard thing to do, to run a nonprofit of this size, especially when you have kids under your care and responsibility. We cleaned up our clubs, that was an issue, especially in PV. We wanted to be proud of the clubs, we wanted those kids to be proud of where they go every single day. We cleaned it out, we put new computers that were donated from the University of Phoenix, we brought in two new, well, used buses, but they're 15-passenger buses that can be, that we can count on moving those kids to and from our location. We put in new financial and HR policy and procedures, again, all led by some of the best practices of other large Boys and Girls Clubs organizations. We were also able to lower the membership fees, because when things went bad, they tried to bring it on to the families of, you know, increasing those fees, and 62% of our kids, you know, qualified for free or induced lunch. So we were able to lower those fees, it's a $25 annual membership fee, and now we start at $40 a month, and that's all based on income. So we go down to $30 if the child gets reduced lunch, and $20 a month if they qualify for free, and each additional sibling is $10 off. So we want to make sure that there's no barrier for a child to come to our clubs. We also started a staff training program, and that was one key thing. We saw the staff that we did hire back, we hired back about five of the staff, and they were so excited to be trained. And we brought some professionals up now, up from Phoenix, and we really wanted to show them what a real Boys and Girls Club is gonna look like inside, and some youth development practices and those things, that they'll have the tools to assist the kids that we're serving. May 1 opened, we were happy to say that in our summer program, which we did run only one summer program out of our Prescott Valley location, that we were able to see 300 members come through those doors. So we started gaining momentum in May, but it really hit in the summer. And each one of you has, our annual report was just some of the financial background and some of the numbers of the kids that we served. We were able to serve 475 members in the two clubhouses in Prescott and Prescott Valley. You know, we started running structured programs, and our school relationships really were starting to be built. Working with Dr. Stan and Dan Streeter at Home Bowl School District, they assured us that, you know, transportation would be available for those kids that wanted to come to the Boys and Girls Clubs. So we started that relationships with the schools that had a huge impact on the number of kids that we started seeing. We grew our board in 2014, we had two board members left of the 22. So two stayed on, and we started building that board. We started looking at those community leaders that really aligned with our mission and what we were trying to do at the clubs. In fact, we were fortunate to have Chief Gerald join our board in January, so we went from two board members to seven board members in 2014. We also developed several new events. One was the Wild West Mud Fest that we actually held in the entertainment district. Brian Witty was a key component of that successful event, especially with his staff, and we're, you know, of course, looking forward to the second one, Annual One, in September 19th of 2015. We also increased our donor base, which was really big, and that was all just because we started getting out in the community and spreading the message of what we do in our clubhouse. Not a lot of people knew what the Boys and Girls Clubs were doing, and that's one key thing that we had to do to make sure that the community knew what was going on in our clubs. Because of how much we were able to raise and the money that we saved on some of the things that we held back on, we were actually able to open up a nonprofit reserve account through Yavapai Community Foundation. We look, that's one of our goals, is to keep putting money into that reserve account, so in bad days that we'll have something to draw on, I don't ever expect to draw on it, but it is important for a nonprofit to open one and have that at its ready. In 2015, we've already seen tremendous growth in the clubs. The Prescott Valley average daily attendance is about 105 kids. On our busy days, which would be today, we see 120. That facility, we're almost outgrowing that facility already, but the beauty of it is we do have the park, so our staff uses every area of the park and everything like that, so the kids, you know, it's keeping fresh and moving, and the kids wanting to come back. We also, one of our goals is to, we're looking for funding for a basketball court next to the building, so the kids have something right, you know, right next door that they can go and play basketball, or dodgeball, or things like that. So we have written several grants, and that's one of our number-one goals for the organization by 2016, to have something in place. Teen nights, we realize that we weren't helping the teens, that we should. I came from Metro Phoenix and ran one of the largest teen centers, and a lot of our area of the club is dedicated to our six- to 12-year-olds. And so what we decided to do was to actually have teen nights every other Friday. We've been seeing some good and some mixed numbers in there, but we open up our clubs from 6:00 to 8:00 on Friday nights, every other Friday, and we've also tried to run open gym over at Mountain View School to, you know, rented that facility a couple hours of the month. So we'll continue with that, because we do want to serve the teens. That is one of our priorities here in Prescott Valley. We also started talking with the Phoenix Suns to bring a junior sons program to Prescott Valley in conjunction with some of the schools. A Boys and Girls Club should have sports activities and should be running leagues and things like that, so that's one way that we could also help the community here in PV. We also have a goal, the board has a goal, to add eight additional board members that are dedicated, so if any of you have any ideas, please let us know. And we want to increase our individual giving by 50%. The individual giving in the past hasn't been where it should be to keep it sustainable, so we have been doing several things, like a breakfast event that we had in November to educate the public about what the Boys and Girls Clubs are doing and increase our individual giving. We, you know, we know we have a lot of work to do, we have come pretty far, but there's a lot more to do. I do encourage each one of you, if you'd like to take a tour of the clubhouse, especially when the kids are there, to kind of see it firsthand of what's going on now and how things may have changed and may have stayed the same, but we really do appreciate the partnership that we have with the town of Prescott Valley, because we know that's one of the most important partnerships that we can have, and we hope to continue that. Any questions?
Questions, anyone? Larry?
Not a question, Mayor and Council, but Gerald, just to compliment the Phoenix organizations for coming up here and assisting when the local clubhouses were flailing around and having a bit of a challenge, and you guys have done an outstanding job of fixing what was broken and growing the program, and so you really need to be complimented and have done a good job of marshaling some of the resources out of the valley to make it all happen, and so for that, we appreciate it.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments?
No.
Yeah, congratulations, and thank you for your great job. Okay, next, we have the Team Up to Clean Up. Gloria?
We were gonna do a business intro, but the person didn't show up, so we'll just go right to Team Up. Okay, as you all know, Team Up to Clean Up is coming May 2nd. That's gonna be here in three weeks, so... Oh, good, hi-tech here. I've never done this before, so, taking Marnie's place because she's doing Still Magnolias tonight, if you haven't seen that, ladies, it's an awesome play. Team Up to Clean Up is May 2nd. It's a wonderful event that we partner with you guys, with the town, we do our check-in, our volunteer workers, we have a lot of volunteers that come out and help us that day, we give them a free t-shirt, and it's awesome to give them a bag and a place to go clean up, and then they love going out and cleaning up. I mean, KVRD will do a broadcast with Papa John's Pizza for us, and they give away pizza all afternoon as long, as about 11:30, then we start doing all that. These are some of the teams we had, some of the biggest teams this, last year that we've ever had. You can see two of them right there that are huge, and so we had some great response, and we are ready, we're starting to get the same response again this year, people calling saying, you know, "Do I need to sign up? Do I need to register?" "No, just come and have a good time." And the people cleaning up, we give them bags, and then the fire department will come and cook hot dogs for everybody, bring out their grills and grill up those hot dogs for us, and then we give them chips and cookies and have the buns and all the condiments, and it's just a great time. We love to be there and help everybody get out and clean. And then, of course, the part that you guys do. The town is amazing on getting all this stuff accomplished for us, and I guess that's my last slide, it's not going anymore. So anyway, thank you for the sponsor, this cooperation that we do with you guys, because we love being able to help our town and clean up our town. I know our Lions Club last weekend cleaned up our one-mile stretch of highway, so I'm not sure in the next couple weeks if it'll get dirty again, but, oh, well, we'll send somebody out to clean up anyway. So that's our Team Up to Clean Up. I would like to do some Business Academy intros. I have three ladies here that graduated from our Business Academy that I'd like to introduce to you. We have had a wonderful success, we had 11 that ended up graduating from our class, and Victoria Minch is an intern with us with NAU Yavapai. She comes over and volunteers for us three days a week and helps out in stuffing envelopes and anything that we can think of, and we put her to work, and she's been a great asset to us. She went through the Business Academy. Debbie Gatto, Time to Travel with Debbie, she was another one that graduated with us, and Lisa West from New Life, and these ladies all graduated, and one of you, any of you want to say something about Business Academy? Okay?
Thank you, Gloria, for this opportunity, and thank you all for this opportunity. I can't say enough good things about the Business Academy. I thoroughly enjoyed it, learned a lot, and would recommend it to anyone that's considering taking this or enjoying this opportunity, and that and the Citizens Academy, I can't stop talking about.
Lisa, you're up.
Hi. Anyway, we really enjoyed the academy, it really taught us a lot of different things, being in business for a long, long time. It was nice to learn some of that stuff that we forget about, so, you know, some of the socialization of social media and stuff that we don't really touch in our age group that much anymore, and trying to keep up a little bit with the kids, as we say. So I learned a lot on that end of it, of trying to kind of catch up a little bit with some of those things, but it was incredible, so we really enjoyed it, and the Chamber always does a beautiful job, we love them.
Victoria, 20 minutes.
She's the bashful one, she won't talk. We will do another one in the fall, so we'll have that, dates and everything out for that. One little thing I wanted to remind you of is our golf tournament is coming up, two weeks from Saturday, April 25th. If you are a golfer, come out and golf with us, we'd love to have you come out and golf with us. If not, just support us any way you can, we'd love to have you come out and be with us, so, thank you very much for letting us be here tonight, we appreciate all that you guys do for us.
Good. Any questions, comments? Do you have a comment, Mary?
No, sir.
Gloria, thank you for doing both at once.
Thanks.
Okay, we move on to Proclamations, Arbor Day. Somebody here to receive the Arbor Day proclamation?
No.
Oh, you must have a different menu than I, or agenda than I.
Counsel, it's on your screen, on your agenda.
Yeah, it is.
Not on mine, it wasn't, no. Okay, Citizen of the Month, I guess that would be you, Mike.
Steven.
Steven.
Steven? That wasn't on our agenda, so I don't know, that's, somebody, somebody gave us an obsolete agenda, I guess.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. We, again, have brought before you our Citizen of the Month, and so tonight, we have a very special Citizen of the Month, it's Maris Dunn, and she is a dog groomer at Kennel Camp Village, and she really helps out our canines, and we'll tell you how in just a minute, but I'd like to have her come on up. She has lots of protection tonight. So I'm just gonna read this real quick. For at least the past five years, every other week, Maris Dunn, groomer at Kennel Camp Village, has groomed Prescott Valley canines Joey, Bogart, Ike, Jake, and Caio, free of charge. This includes bath and blow-dry, which the dogs love, nails trimmed, and all other needed grooming. A real dog lover, Maris also has donated directly to the canine unit to pay for equipment and dog needs. Additionally, Kennel Camp always hosts the retirement parties for the dogs when they leave service. Maris's service helps the general welfare of the dogs, maintains their health and appearance, lots of people pet the dogs, and it's always nice when they pet a clean dog, and cuts down on shedding, which makes it easier to maintain the police vehicles and homes. Thank you, April's Citizen of the Month, Maris Dunn, for your service and support to the furry members of our police department and their handlers. So we have two members of our canine unit here today, and I'm sure they'd like to say something, so.
I would, I'm not gonna use the microphone, I speak loud enough, it's odd that I do that, but I, when I first met Maris, I can tell you that as it started off, she was just so knowledgeable about the dogs, and she was teaching me things about how to take care of the dogs and how to actually provide, you know, a good foundation, especially when I started, what a dog needed. Over the years, our relationship is more than just, I'm coming in to get my police canine groomed, she is my family now. I can't tell you that I'm not a person that puts my family out for people to see, but she is welcome at my home anytime, and I can't thank you enough for letting me in your life and letting me know your family and everything that you do for us in the Prescott Valley Police Department.
Well, thank you very much.
Dave, top that.
I just dropped the mic on that one.
Mic drop's appropriate on that one. But he's right, the last seven years or so, that, every other week, it's a joy to come see you and talk about dogs and life and everything like that, it's just, just wonderful.
Thank you.
And for the, for the council, you know that our dogs are well taken care of, they're always healthy, and if we don't clean their ears, she lets us know it.
Well, thank you very much, I am really deeply honored and touched, and the canine unit brought me a lot more than I can give them. I'm not going to repeat what I just said. No, I just said, I was extremely touched and honored, and, but the canine unit brought me a lot, a lot more than I can give them, a lot more, and I have my best friend here with me, and my family.
Well, we got a plaque here to recognize you as April's Citizen of the Month, and we appreciate everything you do for, for our puppies here. I don't know if I should call them puppies, they're pretty big, so, but thank you for what you do, and, there you go, thank you very much.
Thank you very much, thank you.
Picture?
Yep.
The dogs are excited about this, can you tell? Look at the dogs.
The grooming goes to the handlers, too, I can tell.
Mayor, could the, could they introduce the dogs? The canines?
They didn't introduce the canines, so.
Oh, that's, if you guys don't know me, you guys haven't been to the meetings, yeah?
For everybody out there that sees you.
Okay, I'm sorry, this is my police canine, Caio, and my name is Paul Heinz, I've been with the police department 12 years, Caio's going on three and a half years, he's my second canine, Joey was my first. Thank you very much.
This is my canine partner, Jake, my name's Dave McNally, I drive his car. I've been with the Prescott Valley Police Department for 11 years, and Jake's my second canine partner. Ike retired a couple years ago, and Jake's been with me ever since. Thank you.
Thank you so much, and congratulations. I appreciate that. I have to apologize, the agenda, for some reason, we got an agenda that was missing a few items. No, Diane thinks we're used to using a screen, some of it is still old-fashioned, we like it on paper, so that was just a little bit of catching up to do. Okay, we're gonna move on to Proclamations, Arbor Day. Somebody here to receive the Arbor Day proclamation? Come on up. Diane, do you have the proclamation?
Yes, Mayor, do. National Arbor Day, whereas in 1872, J. Sterling Morton proposed to the Nebraska Board of Agriculture that a special day be set aside for the planting of trees, and whereas this holiday, called Arbor Day, was first observed with the planting of more than a million trees in Nebraska, and whereas Arbor Day is now observed throughout the nation and the world, and whereas trees can reduce the erosion of our precious topsoil by wind and water, cut heating and cooling costs, moderate the temperature, clean the air, produce life-giving oxygen, and provide habitat for wildlife, and whereas trees are a renewable resource giving us paper, wood for our homes, fuel for our fires, and whereas trees in our town, excuse me, increase property values, enhance the economic vitality of business areas, and beautify our community, and whereas trees, wherever planted, are a source of joy and spiritual renewal, now therefore, a Harvey C. Scoog, Mayor of the Town of Prescott Valley, Arizona, do hereby proclaim April the 24th, 2015, as Arbor Day in the Town of Prescott Arizona, do hereby proclaim April the 24th, 2015, as Arbor Day in the Town of Prescott Valley. And I urge all citizens to celebrate Arbor Day and to support efforts to protect our trees and woodlands. And further, I urge all citizens to plant trees to gladden the heart and promote the well-being of this and future generations.
Thank you, Diane. Any comments?
I will share a little story of the importance of trees. My family that lived back east received a picture of my flowering plum tree about four weeks ago while they had six feet of snow. I'm no longer a member of that family.
Any other comments for Ron?
Well, we are all members of the Parks and Rec Commission. Michelle Tethrow, Elaine Fallman, Danny Avlos, and I'm Ron Brinkman. And we want to accept this proclamation. I also want to remind everybody, the public is invited to Arbor Day at Antelope Park from 10:00 a.m. to noon. It's gonna be a fun and exciting event. And please come out and join us. We're also looking for volunteers on May 9th. The city, the town is doing a tree inventory, and we need volunteers to get into our parks and finish that. That's part of a grant that we have from the Department of Forestry in cooperation with the University of Arizona. So, May 9th, come out and join us. And Arbor Day, April 24th, in Antelope Park.
Danny?
I'd just like to thank the City Council for their involvement in understanding of how important the parks are to our community, not only as aesthetic aspect of it, but in bringing the community together. It's really good to see these parks coming to life, seeing people coming out there and utilizing them to their fullest. So, thank you.
Thank you, Danny. Helene?
Well, Mayor, I guess I'd have to say I'm probably the oldest tree hugger in the Commission. And I'm delighted to be so. The parks have always meant a great deal to me growing up in the city and now being here. So, I'm glad that we have a lot of support from the council and Larry Tarkowski. And that means a great deal to us. And we have a great director in Brian, and I hope it all continues to go as well as it has been.
And you know that old Helene, you've been 39 ever since I've known you.
Oh, thank you, Mayor.
Michelle?
I don't think I can talk that. Everyone is pretty much... I don't think I can talk what Helene just shared. So, other than thank you for supporting the parks and being a part of what we're doing, what we're working really hard to do for the citizens here at Prescott Valley, just a great thank you.
Thank you, Michelle. And Ron is going to accept a proclamation. Thank you for what you're doing. I appreciate you.
And Mr. Mayor, if I could, it's really appropriate that you're having Arbor Day, the Arbor Day celebration out at Antelope Park. When you're out there hopefully planting a new tree or two, take a look at the trees that are in that park. The ones that are 45 to 50 foot tall were planted by the Town of Prescott Valley using a grant from the Arizona State Forestry Department. And take a look at the growth that you've gotten on those trees. As you might well imagine, within the boundary of that park, it looked like the grazing area outside of the park. There wasn't a tree one. And one of my sources of personal pride is taking a look at those trees that I remember when we planted, I was taller than those trees.
Well, comment, Larry.
We'll take a look at that. And I see our canine friends are gone. They are also tree lovers, so...
Any other comments?
I just wanted to say that I think they do a fabulous job. This is a great group. They work together well. And they do, they just move forward. They're forever making leaps and bounds. You guys are awesome. Thank you.
Good. Any other comments? Thank you. Appreciate the work you do. Okay, next we have the National Library Week. Who's here to accept that? There we go. Come on up. Troops. Diane, do you have the proclamation?
National Library Week, April the 12th through the 18th. Whereas libraries create potential and possibilities within their communities, campuses, and schools, libraries level the playing field for all who seek information and access to technologies. And libraries continuously grow and evolve in how they provide for the needs of every member of their communities. And whereas libraries and librarians open a world of possibilities through innovative steam programming, marker spaces, job-seeking resources, and power of reading. And whereas librarians are trained tech-savvy professionals providing technology training and access to downloadable content like eBooks. And whereas libraries support democracy and affects social change through their commitment to provide equitable access to information for all library users regardless of race, ethnicity, creed, ability, sexual orientation, gender identity, or socioeconomic status. And whereas libraries, librarians, library workers, and supporters across America are celebrating National Library Week. Now therefore, I Harvey C. Scug, Mayor of Prescott Valley, do hereby proclaim April 12th through 18th, 2015, as National Library Week and encourage all residents to visit the library this week to take advantage of the wonderful library resources available at your library. Unlimited possibilities are at your library.
Thank you, Diane. Laura, any comments?
Well, as at least Casey knows, a big piece of my heart is involved in this library. I have a library card. I still like to hold a book. But more than that, the various programs you have with the various age groups, you know, from the tutoring, to the storytelling, to all the things you do for our adults. We are a blessed community to have you in our libraries. And please know, you're not forgotten, but you are also always appreciated.
Thank you, Laura. Next.
Thank you very much. We have a lot of events planned next week for Library Week, so I hope everybody can come down.
We are so thankful. I was gonna say, I talk loud anyway, but we're so thankful for everybody's support, the town, the council. We have an amazing community. And coming up from the valley to this small community, it just shows the huge heart that the library has here. And it is amazing. It truly is what we as librarians deal with every day, helping patrons, especially socioeconomic differences. And to be able to help people find jobs, help them with technology issues, it's a blessing. So, we're very, very happy to be here and accept this proclamation.
Thank you so much. And keep up the good work. Okay, next is National Volunteer Week. Diane, would you read that? And Heidi's going to accept that.
Volunteer Week, April the 12th through the 18th. Whereas the entire community conspires, equipped, and mobilized people to take action that changes the world. And individuals and communities are at the center of social change, discovering their power to make a difference. And whereas volunteers can connect with local community service opportunities through hundreds of community service organizations, like hands-on network action centers. And whereas during this week, all over the nation, service projects will be performed and volunteers recognized for their commitment to service. The giving of oneself in service to another empowers the giver and the recipient. And whereas experience teaches us that government by itself cannot solve all of the nation's social problems. And whereas our country's volunteer force of more than 63 million is a great treasure, and volunteers are vital to our future as a caring and productive nation. Now therefore, I Harvey C. Scug, Mayor of the Town of Prescott Valley, do hereby proclaim April the 12th through the 18th of 2015 as National Volunteer Week and urge my fellow citizens to volunteer in their respective communities. By volunteering and recognizing those who serve, we can come together to make a difference.
Thank you, Diane. Vice Mayor, any comments?
I want to commend you on the tremendous improvements and growth of our Volunteer Central and your dedication to it. And the wonderful event you're gonna have this month. But I have a complaint. For the first time in two years, I'm gonna leave this state and miss that wonderful event. But I want you to take lots of pictures and show them to me when I get back.
Any other comments, anyone? Heidi, 20 minutes.
You're scared, aren't you? I am very much privileged to head up Volunteer Central. And just over the year and a half that I've done this, I've just been blown away with the dedication and the desire to give of our volunteers. We have volunteers in the library, in GIS, in the Civic Center. We have a volunteer doing a parks asset mapping project. We have lots of volunteers in the police department. And they just give an immeasurable dimension to the town, not to mention saving money for taxpayers and giving of themselves their personalities. I have a couple of wonderful volunteers right in Volunteer Central that I enjoy working with every week. We have more than 230 volunteers in this town that give of themselves to our community. So, we're very proud to say that on April 22nd, we're gonna have the first-ever Volunteer Appreciation Banquet. We're very much looking forward to that. So, I guess I just really want to say that it's very much my privilege to work with these volunteers.
And Laura Lee is taking a vacation. What a girl. Any other comments, anyone?
Heidi, you do a great job in everything. So appreciate you.
Thank you, Heidi. Keep up the good work. We appreciate that so much. Okay, anyone got any... Oh, I'm sorry. Oh, that's... Comments, communications? You have the first one, Laura?
I do. We have a very exciting event happening this Saturday, 5:30 in our amphitheater. We're going to dedicate our new improved stage and amphitheater. And we're going to have an event called Theater on the Green. So, families come out with your chairs and maybe a little laprobe, since it's cooler than we thought it was gonna be, and come and celebrate with us and attend the very first Theater on the Green, right here in Prescott Valley, in the amphitheater at our Civic Center.
Good. Any other comments, communications?
Mayor, I got a comment.
Steve?
We have another event coming up, not this next Saturday, but the one after that, April 18th, which is the Prescott Valley Stand Up for Veterans. It's not to be confused with the Stand Down, which helps only homeless veterans. This is for all veterans. There's gonna be a bunch of services that most veterans don't know about, as well as a job fair. And we're gonna have lunch for the veterans. So, it's from 9:00 to 5:00, Saturday, April 18th. And if you know any veterans, let them know about it so they can come out there and either check out the services or possibly get a job.
Tell them where it's, Steve.
Oh, it's at the Prescott Valley Event Center, right across the street.
Thank you. Any other... Laura?
I just want to thank Steve for, Stephen, for all the hard work and the heart you've put into this event. We're truly lucky to have you have a heart for this event.
Good job, Steve. We appreciate that. Okay, if there's none other, we'll move on to the matters listed on the consent agenda. They're considered to be one, they're considered to be routine by the Town Council and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items. If discussion is desired, that item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered separately. It includes the approval of the March 26th, 2015 council meeting minutes. B is approving a new Series 12 restaurant liquor license and interim permit for Randall's LLC located at 1030 Prescott Country Club Drive Dewey, formerly Bogey's Grill. Randall J. Bonneville applicant. Now, that's at the Prescott Country Club Restaurant. C is approving a permanent extension of the premises patio permit for existing liquor licenses, number 06130055, for Barefoot Bob's Billiards, located at 8367 East Pico's Drive, applicant to Cheryl A. Soto. D is approving a purchase of a 2009 Dodge Model 5500 bucket truck from 180 Equipment Incorporated in the amount of $75,000. E is approving the right-of-way, attached right-of-way agreement with the Arizona State Land Department for the Northside Sewer Project, CIP, number W280.3. And F is approving our constable. Anyone wanna pull an item, or do you wanna approve it as a whole? Any? Mary?
Well, Mayor, I'll make a motion. Make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Okay, is there a second, anyone?
I'll second it, Mayor.
We have a motion and a second. Would you sit the vote there, Diane? And that passes. Okay, new business for review, comment, and/or possible action. Public hearing zoning map change, ZMC 15001, Enterprise Parkway. I declare the hearing open. Carmen, you're on.
Good evening, Mayor Scug and Council. This evening, we have for you a request by the Town of Prescott Valley for a zoning map change from RCU 70 to M1 PAD. This is the 58, approximate 58 acre portion of property which is adjacent to the Enterprise Parkway improvement which the town has recently undergone. This is a portion of this project which we've now annexed the property. And the adjacent property is zoned M1 PAD. This would be the appropriate zoning for this area in order to encourage development. The M1 PAD zoning district is the only one that allows sexually oriented businesses. And therefore, the staff is going to make a couple of requests based on a recommendation by the Planning Commission. Number one, that uses, under subsection 1317020, sexually oriented businesses be prohibited in the zoning district. And also, last month, the council heard from Public Works a change order with respect to a turn lane. The town is fronting the costs for a turn lane on Enterprise Parkway onto Academy Way, which in order to recover those costs, we're going to also, at the recommendation of the Planning Commission, request that a condition be placed on this, that future development participate in recovery of those funds based on traffic studies and approved by the town engineer. And therefore, this request for a zoning map change.
Okay, any questions, anyone? Carmen, you mentioned you wanted one of the prohibition, prohibited item put in the, do you have to make that special motion for that, or what? Ivan wants your thoughts.
The Commission has already recommended it to you with that condition. And you've got this ordinance that includes now that condition. So, if you adopt the ordinance, it will be there.
Good. Any one from the public here to comment? Any council comments? Mike?
Yeah, I just want to make the comment. I know Laura Lee and I, and I think Marty, we're at an economic development meeting with one of the businesses in Prescott. And we are proud to indicate that we're involved with in improving our access to our industrial area. Because we did do, or had a lot of discussion regarding economic development and the industrial areas, both in Prescott and Prescott Valley. And we thought it's a great time to brag about the fact that we're enhancing access so we can attract bigger and better businesses to that area. So, we were very proud that night, I think.
Great. And also for me, as a planner here for the town, it's always a pleasure to be able to come to the council and bring, you know, good news and exciting things to further that.
Good. Any other questions, comments? Anyone from the public? No more comments? Anything else, Carmen?
No.
Okay, if there's not no more comments, then I would declare the public hearing closed. And we'll move on then to number nine, B. Consideration of approving ordinance number 804 by title only on 2... Consideration of approving ordinance number 804 by title only on two separate occasions, then place the same on final passage, approving the zoning map change, ZMC 15001 Enterprise Parkway. That's the one we just discussed. No more questions, or a motion?
Motion to read ordinance number 804 by title only on two separate occasions, then place the same on final passage by electronic vote.
I'll second the motion.
Okay, with a motion and a second, would you set the vote? Okay, that passes. The motion is in favor, and therefore, I ask the mayor to read ordinance by title only for the first reading. Diane?
Ordinance number 804, an ordinance of the mayor and the common council of the town of Prescott Valley, a municipal corporation of Arizona, amending the town zoning map by changing the zoning classification of approximately 58 acres located south of the Big Sky Industrial Park, approximately one mile east of Mendocino Drive, in a portion of section 20 Township 14 North, range one east of the Gila and Salt River Meridian, Yavapai County, Arizona, from RCU 70 Residential, single-family rural, to M1PAD Industrial General Limited Planned Area Development Zoning, and providing that this ordinance shall be effective 30 days after its passage and approval according to law.
Thank you, Diane. Good job. Okay. Now we move on to number C, another public hearing. Zoning map change, ZMC 15-002. Jones, I declare the hearing open. Richard?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As you can see from the giant crowd behind me, is indicative of the controversy surrounding this application. You reviewed this two weeks ago as a general plan amendment, having received a recommendation from the Planning and Zoning Commission to amend the plan, and before you to respond to any questions that the public may have about rezoning this piece of property that will now be congruent, recommendations congruent to the recommendations of the town's general plan. There have been meetings to discuss this, and nobody has attended. I would respond to any questions that you may have, or assist you in responding to questions from the public.
Questions or comments, anyone?
I think it's a compliment. I think you're trusted, along with your department. So let's just enjoy the moment.
Here, here.
Anyone of our audience create a comment? Burke? No comment. If there's no further comment, then I would declare the public hearing closed, and we move on to D. Consideration of approving the reading of ordinance number 805 by title only, on two separate occasions, then placing the, placing the same on final passage, approving zoning map change, ZMC 15002. No, any more questions, comments, or motion?
I'll make a motion.
Go ahead.
Motion to read ordinance number 805 by title only on two separate occasions, then place the same on final passage by electronic vote.
I'll second that, Mayor.
We have a motion and a second. Would you set the vote? Anyway, that's passed. And with that, I would ask the town clerk to read the ordinance by title only for the first reading. Diane?
Ordinance number 805, an ordinance of the mayor and the common council of the town of Prescott Valley, a municipal corporation of Arizona, amending the town zoning map by changing the zoning classification of lot 4243, unit 14, from R2 residential multiple dwelling units, to C2 commercial, general sales and services, and providing that this ordinance shall be effective 30 days after its passage and approval according to law.
Thank you, Diane. Laura made the comment that there's a high degree of trust with the council to staff. I think that holds true to the community to the staff as well. And it's a good job. Thank you, Richard. Okay, with that, we'll go on to E. Consideration of approving a supplemental maintenance agreement with EPNG, that's El Paso National Gas, for the construction of a multi-use path on PV pipeline right-of-way. Norm?
Thank you, Mayor, council. This particular item may look familiar to you if you've been around a while. We've dealt with this a while. A little bit of background, just for the public's benefit. We did, were successful with receiving federal ADOT transportation enhancement grants in '06, '07, '08, and '09, four each, basically $500,000 apiece, the maximum grant award, for the aggregate amount of about $2 million. The exhibit you see, we've shown many times in the past, that hasn't changed, but really what this is, is the PV pipeline. It's the existing El Paso natural gas line. Since that time, Kinder Morgan has purchased an interest in it, and understand some of the agreements is still with El Paso, with how they do corporate type of language. So what you do have before you is a particular maintenance agreement. Basically, the easement that was obtained back in '91, I believe, many years ago, 24 years ago, was to allow a multi-use path. We started working as the town with the citizens on obtaining a funding source in order to improve a multi-use path, which is approved way back in 1991 for this particular alignment. If you refer again to the exhibit you see above you, there is, actually, the three grants is three phases, basically, two and a half miles long along the, what we're calling the PV pipeline. And actually, a fourth grant is along Lake Shore Drive, which we're calling the central core multi-use path. That's actually a phase three, because there's been other previous grants, and we're always taken off from the back. So this was federal funding. With federal funding, there can be, I mean, challenges or opportunities, is how I look at them. We've had lots of opportunities to continue to seek success. At this point in the game, I'd like to tell you, we're getting even closer to going to construction. What you do have before you is a maintenance agreement that was required by current Kinder Morgan. Basically, it's a use agreement to identify the use of the multi-use path, to make sure that 20-inch high-pressure gas main, that integrity is always taken care of, and always a first, safety first, as it shares this particular right-of-way with the multi-use path. So this is an agreement. It has gone through, Ivan has helped tremendously with making sure the agreement is good common ground between what El Paso needed to see slash Kinder Morgan versus the enjoyment of the multi-use path that we'd like to move forward with construction. So if the writing of the RSCA tonight looks a little like I'm on top of my game, well, Ivan helped him with some of the writings. So do like to thank Ivan. The attachments to this particular agreement, I think, actually got so large that we couldn't even attach most. What it is, is actually, the agreement's about 25 pages. Secondly, they have attached the construction plans, which is based 100%, in addition to a safety agreement that they wanted attached, the maintenance agreement, to make sure we're always looking out for this high-pressure gas main. So there's exhibits A, B, and C that can get very voluminous, but is part of the agreement. I'm happy to report that if council also chooses to approve this maintenance agreement, then that's the last step of many steps in order to move forward with the construction. We've had discussions with Arizona Department of Transportation. Council may recall here, a couple of years ago, we actually approved some of the last funding agreements. It's been sitting, waiting to be done, and we've stayed in constant contact with Arizona Department of Transportation. They have re-obligated the money. If we move forward with this agreement and get Kinder Morgan to turn it back in a timely fashion, we may be looking at construction actually this fall. If you look at this exhibit that we've put in place for the last few years, we really anticipated we would be in construction in fall of '13. I'm happy to report, we've got good level of confidence, which I've had for a good number of years, that we can actually go to construction this fall of '15. But I have better confidence now. So we would like to see this put into place. Just some more background, this does provide very important linkages between the Mountain Valley Park, as you see, to the Antelope Park we talked about earlier tonight. I think that's one of the big things here, is you can actually link the schools through multi-use path in addition to the parks that's adjacent to the schools. These linkages are important. Council may recall some of the construction we've just completed along Loose Drive, multi-use path connections. They actually, on Loose Drive, we've actually just need to complete the connection there to this multi-use path. We thought Loose Drive would follow this project, but thankfully, we're here today that this will follow Loose Drive. But we are continuing building linkages for this particular project and this multi-use path network that we're building. In short, it's a maintenance agreement to better define us getting along and co-locating with the existing gas line, and I'd be happy to respond to any questions, or if Ivan could, about some of the maintenance agreement particulars.
Questions, Mary?
I don't have a question. I just want to say that I truly appreciate all your hard work, Norm, and all the opportunities that you have as you go through all these multi-use paths. And they all look wonderful. I still love the way Highway 69 looks, and appreciate just your patience with everything that happens. Thank you.
Yeah, thanks for that, Councilwoman Hallie. It's a good process. We're all ready for that. I do want to maybe point out, too, the concrete and the trees, which is very well-received by the public, isn't allowed in this particular alignment. I do want to point that out. This one, we'll just have asphalt. It was a condition of sharing, co-locating with the gas line, so it will be asphalt, but it will still be a nice amenity. But we can't plant trees for obvious reasons. We can't have trees around that gas line for obvious safety reasons. But it'll be a nice amenity, as I say, for that alternative transportation other than vehicular.
Any other questions, comments? Norm, you gave us plenty of diagrams to look in. I bet you every councilman looked at every one of them.
I hope they did. And read it with intent.
No, because they're engineers, Norm.
In scope, if we can turn this around, I'm fully anticipating with re-obligation, we've worked with Arizona Department of Transportation, they will administer the contract. A mayor may not, depending on your pleasure, bring it back, but when we do announce the construction, we'll get plenty of media coverage when we do move forward with the construction. And that is, we're anticipating in the fall, following the federal process. Arizona Department of Transportation will administer this for us, and they've been gracious enough, we will get to participate in the project, but they will lead the contract administration and the federal reporting that comes with it, which I'm happy about.
Any questions about any particular page in all this detail? Steve?
I was just going to make a motion if we're ready for that.
We're ready?
Ready? Like to make a motion to consider, consideration of approving a supplemental maintenance agreement with EPNG El Paso Natural Gas for the construction of a multi-use path on the PV pipeline right-of-way by electronic vote.
Mr. Mayor, I'll second the motion.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Would you set the vote, Diane? Okay, that passes. Thank you, Norm. That was a good job.
Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, move on to F. Consideration of approving contractor, a contract with LowBitter Waste Management of Arizona Incorporated for disposal services for Cleanup Day, spring 2015, in the amount of $31,090.25. Norm?
Thank you, Mayor, council. Would like, this is actually for the hauling disposal of the Cleanup Day. Would like to give a little more background for our Spring Cleanup Day this year, if I could. I was glad that Gloria came up with talking about the Prescott Valley Chamber of Commerce's team-up to cleanup. The, I think it's getting into the several hundred people help participate in their effort town-wide in order to help clean up. So would like to point out, this year's Cleanup Day event, it's wildly popular event we do every year. In the downturn, we're not seeing as much, I guess, items discarded as we had in better years, but it is a good opportunity for, to clean up the town, in addition to residents to come and pay a nominal fee, as you see per the fee schedule. That fee schedule's been in place since, I believe, 2010. It hasn't changed, but we're looking forward to this year's event, which will be on Saturday, May 2nd. It's one day, from 8 to 4. And likewise, you see the team-up to clean up note in this particular handbill that goes out in the utility bills. They're going out in the month of April to all utility billing customers, so they will see that as a black and white. It's not quite as colorful as this one. And then certainly, the Early Bird Lions participates with some of the cleanup to residents, and we help administrate some of that effort towards people that don't have the ability to pick it up and participate. And likewise, our project, or actually, the event partners you see down at the bottom, in addition to the Prescott Valley Chamber of Commerce, Yavapai County monetarily will also contribute for non-incorporated residents of Castle Canyon Mesa and Prescott Country Club. And likewise, Dewey-Humboldt will participate again this year. So we do like to get them involved, and they do help participate monetarily for the event. Some other quick notes, too, as part of the event. We did send out letters to all of our Adopt a Street participants. That list has actually grown in the past year, so here's actually a current list of, I think there's 11 members listed there, that have the particular area of a particular town Riley cleanup. So we sent out a letter, asked them to clean up or make them aware, and it's a good opportunity to actually call attention to these groups that do clean up our rights of way, and it's not during Cleanup Day, but throughout the year. I know several of the groups, we always have blue bags to pick up on Mondays, it seems. I know Highway 69, the particular group that picks up that one, there's always a pile of bags there that they've cleaned up litter. And really, Heidi talked about, you know, our volunteers we have. Likewise, this is a great opportunity for volunteerism, and it really helps clean up the town, and we do value the effort that these particular groups put in to clean up our right-of-ways. So do want to call attention to them tonight for council's attention. Getting back to, I guess, the matter at hand, we do operate this particular event with Public Works and with some of our equipment, but we do contract out for the hauling contract. The item you have before you, we went out for bid for disposal services like we do every year. We had competition between two firms, as you see there. Waste Management happened to be the low this year on the per ton fee to haul the particular debris away, so we've been in contact with them, and they will, upon your approval, provide the disposal services for the event. This year's popularity, we're hoping we see good participation. We see around 400 tons these days, so it's well within budget if we anticipate that amount of participation, but we'll know May 2nd what that participation's going to be. It can be all kinds of things. So looking forward to this well-worthy community event.
Any other questions?
I got a question. Okay, being that you have it on the screen and you were talking about it, if an organization wanted to adopt a street, do you have streets available for them?
Oh, yes, we do have streets. We've got 260 miles of streets that someone can adopt. So yes, we do have a brochure, and we do participate with them. Well, you know, we do provide the bags and the vests that they can come check out and in, and we do give them some safety tips, but yes, we will put up a sign for the particular organization, and it's lots of right-of-ways out there to be adopted yet.
Good. Any other questions? Mary?
I was just going to make a comment in regards to people adopting the highway. I don't know who takes care of Glassford Hill there, in that one stretch, maybe between Coles and Granville there. There's a lady I see out there, and I'll tell you what, she is just amazing. She is out there all the time cleaning up, and I don't care what the weather is. She keeps that place spotless. I just, so I really thank her. I see her out there all the time. She's a hard worker.
Yeah, like most volunteers, they are very quiet in what they do, but big hearts, and they do work hard, and very much appreciated that volunteer effort, because our rights-of-way are very much litter-free to what they could be with this effort.
Comment, Laura?
I'm just reading. There's the name right there, Mary.
Oh.
Third from the bottom.
K-Y-H-W-H, Crowes Family.
Oh, okay. Great job to them.
Good. Any other comments, questions?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I'd just like to comment that I think you're saying this is a flat fee regardless of the tonnage we pick up.
Correct. As you see, the vehicles, if we back up, that the particular fee schedule is what you see there.
Yeah.
You know, with a double vehicle, a pickup and a trailer, we see for $10. So no, it's not based on, we don't have scales, but we do take, and there's only a few restrictions of what we can't take, but yes, there's all kinds of stuff that comes in.
Well, I know it's our budget, too, and the fee that we'll be paying the waste management is considerably lower, so I appreciate that. And I don't know how much of the fees that we receive offset that, but I'm sure it's nowhere close to what is required.
I think the gate fee is around, what we collect is around $5,000 to $8,000. So on a $40,000 effort, we're anticipating maybe we have a 25% recovery, but the spirit of the particular event is just that, it's a sponsored event. We would like to have, and they do their own labor to bring it down to us, or if it keeps about other right-of-ways, we have to pick it up anyway, so it's a good opportunity for.
It is. It's very popular, and I didn't know if you're saying it was widely popular or wildly popular.
Maybe both, wildly and widely, I guess. So we'll leave it at that.
Good. Any other comments?
I have a question. We have a lot of individuals that are alone, and a great deal of them are female, and they may have things that they aren't able to handle. And do we have anywhere they could call and get some help? Because Larry rescued me last year, and I think we have a lot of people that would want and need to take advantage of this, but they need help. They can't physically...
throughout the day, maybe six times, and they said, "We're just cleaning up the neighborhood." And I think there's the opportunity there for some community spirit. If someone's not physically able, there's others that I think would, you could actually do that on the street.
So, I think they just need to ask.
That's the best thing to do. If you need help, and I think they recognize it, but we do see many pickup trucks that come several times. I know, I think it's Tri-City Towing, they offer that particular service. I know they pick up some different areas, and I see them will do the same assistance. Maybe they do have some clients that they know, and so some people, with their larger trucks, they will bring stuff in.
Any other comments or questions? Any motion, promotion, demotion, commotion?
Mayor, I'll make a motion.
Okay.
Motion to approve a contact, contract with Low Bitter Waste Management of Arizona Incorporated for disposal services for cleanup day, spring 2015, in the amount of $31,999.90.25 by electronic vote.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Will you set the vote? Okay, that passes. Norm, go for it.
Thank you, Mayor Council.
Thank you so much. Okay, move on to number G. Consideration of adopting the attached notice under ARS number 9-51101 to modify and in some cases increase water and wastewater system capacity and resource charges and set a public hearing to date to consider said proposal. Neil, you're up.
I'm glad to hear that. I wasn't sure with all the changes whether I was still going to be talking to you or not. Yeah, so, I was up here a couple weeks ago, and we talked about a lot of this during the work study, and there was a lot of information, and I know that in your packets, there's even more information than what we talked about. And so, I did bring my presentation back, so we can run through that again. There's been a few changes from last time, but I figured what I do is maybe go a little bit quicker, since you've seen it once before, unless you want me to go slow and just kind of go through the whole thing again.
I don't know. We've gone through it. It's real exciting material, but...
Yeah, I thought so, too. That's what I was thinking. Let's just make you go twice as slow. Okay, so, as you're aware, we had Raff Tellis do a study for us on our, primarily on our water and wastewater capacity fees. And in going through that, our goals were to review the fees, eliminate the dual structure that we had for north of 89A and south of 89A on our water system fees, and then look at a different method of assessing those fees. And so, we used previous reports done for our water and wastewater system as the basis for the study. We wanted to make it to where the water wells that the town has, that oftentimes developers are responsible for building, we wanted to make that, the responsibility of the town to do that with the funds generated from the capacity fees, so we built the study so that it would work that way, but that the developers would still be responsible for installing the tanks. And so, the results of that study came out to be fairly close to the fees where they are now, in terms of looking at the water system and the wastewater system. The water capacity fee, if you're looking at north of 89A, actually came down some, but south of 89A, it went up some. And I'm talking, you know, a couple hundred dollars for a single-family residence. The wastewater fee went down by $148 per single-family residence. So, the overall effect is that north of 89A, the fees are coming down in aggregate $227 per household, and the south of 89A, they're going up by $32 for a single-family residential The way we assess those fees right now is presented on the slide, and there are a bunch of different ways of doing that. Residential is a fixed or a flat fee for any-size residence, a single-family. Multi-family is a percentage of that based on how many units that they're building, so a duplex, a triplex. A triplex would be three times the assessment of a single-family, but a certain percentage of that, I believe it's 85%. Commercial was assessed based on fixture units, and there was an undefined one that is currently based on meter size, which is how we would like to assess everything, based on meter size, and that's what we're proposing to do in this study and the documents that you have in front of you. Again, this summarizes how we currently assess the fees, and you can see that it's kind of complex, so it's, you know, if one person calls in, it's not just a standard answer, it's what type of development are you planning on putting in, and then we can tell you how we're going to assess those fees. And then the, the current fees that are assessed are listed for you there. We talked last time a little bit about the complexity of fixture unit counts, and so for commercial, that's how they're assessed. In fact, I had somebody call me on the phone just the other day and wanted to know, for a commercial building of between, say, 10,000 and 20,000 square feet, how much are the water and wastewater capacity fees? And I told them that I couldn't give them that answer, because they would have to go back and look and count the fixture units within the building, and then this is, this is kind of an example of how you count the fixture units. But I did tell him the good news is, we were looking at possibly changing this, so if he waited two months, I might have a different answer for him. One of the things that we talked about that I wanted to go back over a little bit again was looking at, for apartments and hotels, the way we currently assess these fees, it's based on 50% of the single-family residential dollar amount. So, for wastewater, it was around $3,000 for residential, and so for hotels, you would take 50% of that $3,000, and then multiply it by however many rooms you were going to put in, and that's how you would calculate the fee. And then with apartments, with apartments, it's 80%, with hotels and motels, it's 50%. We went back and did a study and looked at the actual water usage by those types of developments, and found that for hotels and motels, they typically only use 25% of what a single-family residential might use, and for apartments, it was somewhere around 30%. So, you can see that there's a disparity between that 25% that they're using versus what we're charging them based on 50% of residential. And then for apartments, it's 30% versus 80%. So, big difference there, and by changing the fees the way we're proposing, it will make it more fair. They will be paying their, more close to their, their fair share of what they were actually using and putting, and the demand they're putting on the system. And so then, these are four specific projects that we have, what the actual fees were that were paid versus what they would have paid under the proposed methodology that we're looking to go to, which is to assess it by a meter size. So, if they tell us what size meter they want for their whole hotel, we will say, "Here's how much you pay." So, it's, it's already predefined. We also did that for commercial, and we got mixed results, and primarily, the reason we got mixed results is because sometimes, when you're looking at fixture unit count, it doesn't accurately reflect what the water usage of that facility is really going to be. And then the other, the other thing that can happen is that some of these numbers, the meter size that they requested is probably larger than they really need, and so, under the new methodology, if we charge them based on meter size, we would have charged them more than they actually paid under the fixture unit size. But if they actually put in the appropriate size meter, the fees are very comparable. So, they, they could go up or down a little bit, but there was a lot of disparity. I think going to meter size will make it a whole lot more uniform in that, in that And so, as, as I said, we're proposing to go to meter size, and the reason for that is it's a whole lot more efficient, easier for us to tell prospective customers what their fees are going to be. We can talk to them in terms of what size of meter they think they're going to need, and we can tell them the fee right over the phone pretty easily. Less confusion or differences of interpretation either in fixture unit counts or, or other things. And then we don't have to worry about whether they're putting in water-saving units, water-saving fixtures, which may have less of a fixture unit count than a standard type of a fixture. One of the bigger differences for commercial is going to be that, because we assess them based on fixture unit count, their fee is actually linear, and so, and it's actually proportional to the exact number of fixture units they have. So, if they have 25 fixture units, or 26 fixture units, it's going to be a little bit more of a fee than if they only have 25 fixture units. Because we're going to meter size only, there's going to be steps. So, before, you know, if they're down here, and the next step is up here, you know, there's going to be those jumps in there. The one advantage to doing it this way, though, is that, once they have that meter installed, if they go to expand their facility, and the meter does not need to be increased in size, we're not going to charge any additional money. They've already paid for that meter and for the full capacity of that meter. Whereas now, if the business wants to expand, regardless of what they paid before, we count the new fixtures they're adding, and we hit them with another charge. So, every time they come in, there's another charge added on. So, there are a few trade-offs on that one. So, fees will be assessed essentially, for new construction, anytime there's a new meter, we assess them. If there's a renovation or tenant improvement, we're proposing to only assess them if there is a need to change the meter size in order to go to a larger, larger meter, and if that happens, essentially, what we'll do is charge them the difference in, in what the two meters would be. So, if we would, if, under the new scheme, we would charge them $3,000 for a 5/8-inch meter, but we charge them, say, $5,000 for a 1-inch meter, we would only charge them the difference if they already have, you know, whatever, depending on whatever their existing size meter is. Wouldn't necessarily give them a refund for a smaller meter if they wanted a smaller meter, but that's an advantage we can keep. Anyways, and so, we want to apply this to the water and to the wastewater capacity fees, and what those fees are changing to, we've already discussed from the Raff Tellis study. The other thing we wanted to do is apply these to the water resources charge. Now, Raff Tellis didn't study the water resources charge, but we would like to basically keep those three fees on a comparable playing field and assess them all in the same way. We didn't really get into last time a discussion about what effect that might have on those fees. And so, I have two more slides after this that talk a little bit more about that, and then I'll be done. Actually, I lied, I have a couple more slides, but, so this just shows what the fees are now versus what they are proposed to be. And so, they're, like I said, they only went up or down a couple of dollars per single-family residence. As the meter size gets bigger, obviously, that bigger gets, that difference gets a little bit bigger, but comparably, it's, it's still not much of a, not much of an increase for wastewater. This is for water and wastewater combined, and you can see the whole, the total difference for a 5/8-inch meter is a total of $32 different for a single-family residential-type development. All right. This is one of my new slides. So, basically, the water resources fee is not changing. Right now, for commercial, we assess, we assess it based on fixture unit, and that same fixture unit dollar amount would still apply if we assessed it by fixture units, and it would be exactly the same. For single-family residential, it would be exactly the same, okay? But because of the methodology, those numbers are going to change a little bit in, when we assess them, and in what the end customer is going to see in any particular case. So, there will be a little bit of difference, but for single-family, the charge will be exactly the same unless they need a larger meter. So, for house, people come in with a house, and they want a 1-inch meter instead of the normal 5/8s, they will pay a larger fee. Right now, they don't do that, they all pay the exact same fee. For duplexes, triplexes, and fourplexes, I put some examples up there of what the current charges are. So, for a duplex, it's almost $2,600. Under the proposed methodology, if they want a single meter going to each of the units, they would pay two times the single-family fee, or $3,052. If they wanted to serve that same duplex with only one meter, they could do that possibly with a 5/8-inch meter, because we have them over, all over town now, where they're served by a 5/8-inch meter. But if they want a little bit bigger meter, 3/4', you can see the fee is actually less than what it is now. But it will also make it a little bit more level when you compare this to, say, a, a single-family residential customer comes in, and they want to put in a single-wide trailer on a small lot. You're going to charge them the full single-family residential. They're not going to use as much water as a much larger house, but they pay the same fee. But then for duplexes, you're going to, you cut them a deal, you know, and you're only making them pay for basically 85% of a single-family residential. This will basically make it a little bit more even, I think, across the board. So, those, those numbers could go up or down a little bit for the duplex, triplex, or fourplex, depending on how they want to administer it. And if they want to put in three meters, we should charge them for the same, the same fee that we're charging for a single-family residential to put in a single meter. For apartments and condominiums, we've already talked about what the effect, overall effect would be, is the costs are likely to go down for those because of the disparity between the actual water usage that we've seen versus what we have charged them. Same with hotel and motel. And commercial, we talked about that because of the, because of the stepwise fashion for, for assessing those fees based on the individual meter sizes, their costs could go up or down as well. And then the undefined category, which is for a nursery, or for a park, or things like that. Right now, there is no defined fixture units. We do charge them based on meter size. We would continue to do that, and so their fees would not change either. So, that's the end of the presentation. I think I've talked about all of this enough, you already know what the, what the summary is. And so, in your packets, you have a copy of the finalized report that Raff Tellis has done. You have a copy of this report for modification, a possible rate increase, which talks in detail about the water resources charge. And then there is a, one other, one other document in there, if I can find it, which is the notice of intent for increasing or modifying the utility system, the water, the wastewater capacity charges, and the water resource charge. And so, that would be the item that you'd be acting on tonight, is whether you're going to adopt this notice. I think I've covered everything. Ivan, have I left anything out?
You would never leave anything out.
Nope.
Good job.
Good. Any other comments? Larry, you have a question?
No. Thank you, Neil.
Mary? Any other questions, comments, motions?
Mayor, I'll make a motion.
Okay, great.
We do charge them based on meter size, we would continue to do that, and so their fees would not change either. So, that's the end of the presentation. I think I've talked about all of this enough, you already know what the summary is. And so, in your packets, you have a copy of the finalized report that Raff Tellis has done. You have a copy of this report for modification, a possible rate increase, which talks in detail about the water resources charge. And then there is a, one other document in there, if I can find it, which is the notice of intent for increasing or modifying the utility system, the water, the wastewater capacity charges, and the water resource charge. And so, that would be the item that you'd be acting on tonight, is whether you're going to adopt this notice. I think I've covered everything. Ivan, have I left anything out?
You would never leave anything out.
No?
Good job.
Good. Any other comments? Larry? Do you have a question? No?
Thank you, Neil.
Mary? Any other questions, comments, motions?
Mayor, I'll make a motion.
Okay, great.
I make a motion to adopt the attached notice under ARS 9-511.01 to modify and in some cases increase water and wastewater system capacity and water resource charges and set a public hearing date to consider said proposal.
I'll second the motion.
Okay, with a motion and a second, would you set the vote? Neil, you did a good job on that. It does make sense.
Thank you, and I'll be back May 14th for the public hearing then, and see how it goes.
Okay, great. Thank you, Neil.
Thank you.
Okay, with that, we move on to item number 10. Consideration and discussion of general unscheduled comments from the public. Those wishing to address the council need not request permission in advance. Any such remarks shall be addressed to the council as a whole and not to any member thereof. Such remarks shall be limited to five minutes unless additional time is granted by the mayor. Any public comments? Go ahead, come on in. Chief, it's good to see you.
I promise to keep this brief, so that you can get to the next item, which I believe is adjournment. You may or may not have noticed in the paper that we've made some changes and some tough decisions out in the Chino Valley Fire District, and I just wanted to make sure that if you had questions that you knew you could give me a call. You know, we had to take a step back and look at our revenue versus expenses like everybody else, and the only way to balance the budget and keep things in line in Chino Valley Fire District was to make some unfortunate cuts, some tough decisions, and we made those. But looking forward, as long as we can continue on this path, we believe we set the district in a position to be sustainable for the long term. And just to clarify some things, PSPRS is obviously an issue for fire and police departments throughout the state, and I want to make sure, because, you know, when you do an interview with a television station, they get to edit, you don't. So, I just want to be clear that we're not saying that the administration of PSPRS refuses to reform. That is, in fact, not the case. The administration of PSPRS has been working for reform, as has the Professional Firefighters of Arizona, putting forth plans that cuts benefits to current members within the system as well as limiting some of those benefits to current retirees. So, but action, because it's a constitutional item, action has to be taken either by the legislature via referendum, or 75% of those in the legislature have to agree. I know in Prescott Valley, from attending your council meetings, it's easy for you to get 75% approval or more. Having spent some time down at the legislature this year, I'm not sure that's possible. So, we're obviously hoping for some reform, maybe the next legislative session, something coming forward, because obviously we would all benefit by some changes in the system. But just wanted to make clear, I wasn't throwing PSPRS, the system, under the bus. We just need our legislators to take action, and I will say that our LD1 legislators, Karen Fan, Noel Campbell, and Senator Pierce, are supportive of PSPRS reform and have championed the cause, so we greatly appreciate their support.
Any, anything else, Chief?
I'm sorry, sir?
Anything else?
No, one reminder, April 21st is the Central Yabupai Board Meeting, where we will be discussing the draft budget that will give us final direction. After that time, we will be in contact with you so that we can come sit personally and talk about the budget in Central Yabupai moving forward. Thank you very much.
Laura wants to...
Could we do some rumor control?
Yes, ma'am.
Fortunately, I only had one citizen approach me and ask me if we were going to be doing the same thing here at Central, in regards to laying off and closing stations down.
Right. No, ma'am, we will not be. We have to make some adjustments in our budget plans going forward. We received a significant increase in our PSPRS costs as well, but we were able to keep our management and operations budget at 2% growth. We absorbed those costs this year. Moving forward, if those increases continue at 6% to 10%, we still won't be in danger of laying off firefighters, but we continue to put forth fiscal plans that show a breakover where the tax rate begins to come down at some point in the future. Right now, we are hamstrung by costs that are handed to us that we have no control over, but we are, we are working diligently to stick to a plan, cutting where we need to cut, but jobs and station closures are not on the docket, and they are not on the docket in the future for Central Yabupai either.
Good, thank you, Chief. Okay, thank you, Chief. Anyone else? Kirk? No, not tonight. If there is no further public comment, then we move on to number 11. Motion to convene into executive session in order to conduct an annual review and evaluation of the performance of Town Clerk/Risk Manager Diane Russell. Executive session is scheduled pursuant to Arizona Revised Statute Number 38-43103A1, which allows for a discussion or consideration of employment assignment or appointment of a public officer, appointee, or employee. Anyone care to make a motion to... Okay, you have a motion, a second, anyone?
I'll second the motion, Mr. Mayor.
Would you set the vote, Dan? And that passes. With that, we'll take a couple minute recess, and we will convene to the executive session.